You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 3rd, 2024 meeting of the La Porte County Board Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good morning, everyone. A happy new year. I am Auditor Tim Stabos and it is my statutory duty to call the reorganizational meeting of the La Porte County Commission to order. So if everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Mr. McCormick.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Deputy Auditor, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Graham Rosa?
Present.
Commissioner Rosensky?
Present.
Commissioner Haney?
Present.
Thank you.
And with that dispensed, we will now have the election of officers. Do I have any nominations for President of La Porte County Commission?
Make a motion, we keep the same officers we had last year.
There's a motion to keep the same officers as last year. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
My duties are dispensed with. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We'll continue with consideration of agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Consider approval of December 20th, 2023 minutes.
To approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consideration of claims.
Commissioners, we have payroll for the period ending 12/29/23 in the amount of $1,499,834.57.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for payroll. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we have operating expense claims in the amount of $850,258.31.
Motion to approve?
Approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we're going to move on to consider appointment of department heads and professional advisors. So would you like to go through each one separately, or what is the?
That would be, that would be fine. I would make a motion to nominate Michigan Insurance and General Insurance Services for insurance agencies of record for 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County financial advisor.
Make motion for sender and company.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
No. I'll second that. Do we also use Baker Tilly as well normally? We have the two options available.
What was that one?
Yes, yes.
I couldn't hear. What was that?
Yeah, Baker Tilly as well. Don't we usually do both of those every year? Both services, they both offer some slightly different things.
We do have a relationship with Baker Tilly also. They help us produce our GAAP financial statements, which the county is trying to get caught up on.
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion and a second for sender and company and Baker Tilly. All those in favor say aye.
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 County Attorney?
Scott Pagek?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Scott Pagek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Animal Shelter Director?
Oh, you missed one.
What did we miss?
Commissioners Executive Assistant, Diane Gonzalez.
No, that's a, that's a higher end. That's not a.
Oh, that's right. Never mind. We don't have that.
So Animal Shelter Director?
Larry Hayes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Building Commission?
Michael Pollan.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Community Correction Director?
Merrick Cabeaty?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 County Engineer?
Jay Sullivan?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Highway Superintendent?
Charity Glasser?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Director of Planning and Regulatory Affairs?
Mitch Bishop?
I guess.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Director of Office and Community and Economic Development?
Pat Rudden?
That would be MCR. A motion for MCR?
Yeah, same thing, Matt Rudden.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
EMA Director?
Rob Sabey?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 EMS Director?
Andrew McGuire?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, should we have discussion at this point, or EMS Director?
A motion to approve? Did we have a second?
I did second, and I'd like to see how, um, what we have scheduled turns out for trying to really make any other decisions at this point.
I have a motion to approve.
I did second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 EM, E911 Director?
Barb Houston?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Music Curator?
Museum Curator, Danielle Adams?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Parks and recreational.
Jeremy's. Jeremy's.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right to Know Hazmat?
Jeff Hamilton?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Director of Facilities?
Sean Fitzpatrick?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Veteran Service Officer?
Eduardo Lozano?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Weights and Measures Inspector?
Dakota Ullrich?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Point of order on our Veteran Service Officer, that's somebody new. Like to have a special thank you to Joe Golick, who has been our Veteran Service Officer for the past, what, eight years, I guess. Done a fantastic job. Veteran Service Officers in La Porte County have brought in, I don't remember the exact count, but it was like 30-some million dollars in veterans' benefits, thanks to our Veteran Service Officers for the job they do, to see that that gets taken care of for our veterans. So special thanks to Joe Golick.
Okay, moving on. Consider Boards and Commission Appointments. So currently, we have two positions available on the library public, on the La Porte Public Library. Currently, it is Corey Campbell and Bonnie Snyder.
Motion to retain them too.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Alcohol Beverage Commission?
I'd nominate Ron Schaefer.
Do we have a second?
No.
Do we have any other nominations?
Yeah.
Rodney McCormick?
Soon as soon as I find it.
We have a nomination for Rodney McCormick. Do we have a second? Fails for lack of second. Do we have any other nominations?
Yeah, as soon as I can find it. Person who was on there previously, John Nebelung?
Do we have a second? Fails for lack of second. We'll have to, would you all agree that we'll hold this over to the next meeting? Or would you like to keep on throwing names out?
I would second.
I would second for Rodney McCormick.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Animal Control Advisory Commission?
We'll keep, motion to keep the board that we have presently.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Board of Construction Review, Marcel, go ahead.
Construction Review?
Don't know that we had anyone, um, submitted for that.
Marcella Kunsik is currently the Secretary on the Board, so I would make a motion to keep her on that board.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Board of Health?
I would nominate Dr. Dora, Patrick Dora.
So I believe we have.
There's a couple of spots open for that, yes.
We have a motion for Dr. Dora?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Dr. Dora. All those in favor say aye.
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 Yeah, and this was changed by the legislature, so we, instead of having five appointments, now the Commissioners only have three?
No, we have, we have, it was seven. Now we have five.
Now we have five. I know we had less than we did. So that goes to the Council. The only other one that was up would be Dr. Georgetta Manning Cox. I'd make a motion that we retain her.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Dr. Cox. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And did we have two others, Diane? Okay, moving on. Board of Zoning Appeal. We have an opening for, so that's open to nominations.
Nominate. Did we receive?
I believe the name we received was Ms. Moore.
Did we receive a request for that? I know we did.
I know I didn't receive anything directly from anyone for VZA.
Ernie Schmidt, Ernie Schmidt was submitted?
Yeah, that's, that's, just came in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would make a motion for Ernie.
So we have a motion for Ernie Schmidt?
Is there any background on Mr. Schmidt? I can't.
Yeah, he'd been one of the county inspectors.
And has retired.
Long time. He just retired.
Okay, he's retired.
Yeah, he's got construction.
The job.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let me just write this down. Okay, moving on. Community Corrections Advisory Board?
Do we have two or three appointments for that this year?
Four.
Four, okay. I'd nominate Vaughn Galloway, Rodney McCormick, and Dan No.
I'll second that.
Dan who?
Noah Zock. Noah Zock, I apologize. I cannot pronounce a gentleman's last name. N-O-W-A-C-Z-Y-K. Might still leave us with one more that we would need, I believe. The nominations are a whole lot over for next meeting.
So we have currently three. We have a second, a motion and a second for Vaughn Galloway, Rodney McCormick, and Dan Nova Sack?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Convention and Visitors Bureau. So currently, we have Mike Sykes and Laura Krentz, and I'd like to make a motion to have Mike Sykes and Diane Gonzalez.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Drainage Board. Currently, we have John Kusson.
Yeah, motion to retain Joe Kusson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Economic Development Commission?
Maintain the present board? I motioned to maintain the present board.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Economic Development Commission is, did we have an appointment for that this year? I know last year, the terms, I think, were four, three, and two years, if I remember correctly.
Right, so we had two that were going to be up, but only one belongs to ours. I'll step down in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
911 Advisory Board? Do we have any nominations for the 911 Advisory Board?
Maintain the present board?
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Fair Management and Events Corporation. Currently, I serve on it, and I would like to stay on it.
Motion to approve that?
Do we have any other appointments this year for that?
Looking for.
Digitals.
Oh, here we go. Apparently, that's the only.
We didn't have any openings, did we?
No, I think that's the only.
We didn't have openings for that.
The list that I have still shows that everybody expires this year, which I know is not correct, so.
So would you second keeping the board that we have?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. We have a motion to keep me on there. Did we second it? I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pioneer Cemetery Commission. We only have one available, Sue Weber.
Motion to keep Sue Webster?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
On the Plant Commission, we have three openings. Glenn Minnick, Harold Parker, and John Carr. Glenn Minnick came to the office and said he was not interested in being reappointed. So do we have a name, if you want to keep the other two, and then name somebody else?
I'd nominate John Watson.
John who?
John Watson.
Oh, yeah, okay. Second to your motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Currently, we have three on there. Matt Bernacki, Amy Blind, and Ken Purce. Do we have any nominations?
Nominate Ken Purce.
Nominate Lisa Moore?
Okay, so let's do it one at a time. Do we have a second for Ken Purce?
So reminder, he's our only Level 3 Assessor on there.
But it's my understanding that we only need a Level 2, and Matt has that Level 2. So Ken dies for a lack of a second. Do we have any other nominations?
Could I respectfully ask to make a comment of one about one of your nominees?
Sure.
Unfortunately, Lisa Moore has a dual homestead. I'm sorry, she had a homestead incorrectly on a property that we had to take away, and we would respectfully ask you to consider that in your appointment to her of this position. We would oppose it respectfully.
Do you do research on our, all our appointments, or just?
No. I was not aware that you were even nominating Lisa Moore, but this happened very recently, and I think it would be inappropriate for someone who cheated the county to be on that board respectfully.
Wow.
Coming from you, that's pretty good. I would, this was acting on the advice of the county assessor. I'd nominate Lisa Moore.
Well, now that allegations have been thrown out from the auditor that a resident has cheated the county, I think that we should put this under investigation and come back at a later date to appoint this, so that this resident has the opportunity to come in and speak for herself. So how about the other two appointments? Do we have a nomination for Matt Bernacki?
Yeah.
Would you like to do Matt Bernacki and Amy Blind at the same time?
Yeah, I'd nominate both of them.
Do we have a second? I'll step down, and I'll second Matt Bernacki and Amy Blind. Those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Public Defender Board. We only have one position available, and currently, we had.
Nate Loggs. I'd nominate Nate Loggs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Redevelopment Commission?
Mark Parkman, Tom Fath, Scott Cooley, and Commissioner Rosensky. That's my nomination.
Do we have a second?
Liaison appointments would be later on in the meeting, but I would second Mark Parkman, Tom Fath, and Scott Cooley. How dare her? Which is crazy.
So are you on there as a liaison, or are you a voting member?
I'm a voting member. That's my, I'd sit on that board. These guys all do a great job.
So I'll step down and second the four. Mark Parkman, Tom Fath, Scott Cooley, and Rich Rosensky. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Regional Bus Authority? Does that one come up too, as well? So we have another member for that board. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Rhonda Spence, Madam President, the County Commissioners, ex officio, non-voting member, is up as well.
Okay.
I would include her in my, in my motion then. Mark Parkman, Tom Fath, Scott Cooley, myself, and Rhonda Spence.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Regional Bus Authority?
Rodney McCormick.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Regional Sewer and Water District?
Marcella Kunsik?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Consider Commissioner Liaison Appointments?
I'd nominate Commissioner Rosensky for the Animal Control Board?
Second.
Sorry, I have a second here. We have the Community Corrections. I nominate Commissioner Haney.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Drainage Board?
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
E911?
Commissioner Rosensky.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Fair Board?
Commissioner Rosensky.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Fair Management and Event Corporation?
Commissioner Graham Rosa?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
No.
I'll step down and I'll, and second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Highway Commission?
Commissioner Graham Rosa?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Job Evaluation?
Commissioner Graham Rosa?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Juvenile Service Center?
Commissioner Haney?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Kankakee River Basin and Yellow River Basin Development Commission?
Commissioner Rosensky.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Museum?
Commissioner Rosensky?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Regional Indiana, Northwest Indiana Regional Plant Commission?
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
I'll step down and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pioneer Cemetery Commission?
Commissioner Graham Rosa?
Second.
We have a second and a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Plant Commission?
Commissioner Haney?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Redevelopment Commission?
Commissioner Rosensky?
Do we have a second? I'll step down and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Regional Sewer District?
Who's on there now? You?
I.
I am not.
Commissioner Haney?
I politely decline.
So I'll nominate Commissioner Rosensky?
I'll second that if you're willing.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Right to Know.
Commissioner Morozinski.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Waste Management, we're all on by default. Weights and Measures.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Second.
I'll... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Workforce Development.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
I decline that. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Haney.
Sure, second.
So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we just want to talk about the designation of publication. So, we received a...
According to the Indiana Code, we will have LaPorte County Herald Dispatch and the Westville Indicator slash Region News.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we can move on to the one part, Public Comment.
Oh, before we do that? I'd like to read the Commissioner's policy. I think it's an ordinance. "Policy to encourage effective, efficient use of public comment input to aid in LaPorte County Commission. In accordance with the Indiana Open Door Law, IC Code 5-14-1-1.5, all regular and special meetings of the Board of County Commissioners will be open to the public. True. Notice and agendas will be posted by the required forty-eight hours before the meeting to the press, posted outside our meeting room, as well as posted on the county's website. Because this board strongly believes in hearing the views of citizens residing in LaPorte County and organizations located here, we support, we seek to adopt a policy of encouragement, encourage effective and efficient use of public comment and input to aid us in the decision-making on various topics. The following guidelines will assist the commission in hearing public comment while conducting effective meetings. Number one, public comment will be listed on the agenda, not only at the beginning of every meeting, but will also be received before the board votes on any given resolutions or ordinances that appear on the agenda. Number two, each person must give his name and address before addressing the board. Number three, as a routine matter, the public comment will be confined to three minutes per person. However, the presiding officer may at his or her discretion permit a longer time period for a given comment if he or she believes it is in the public interest for the normal time period to be extended. Number four, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Number five, the presiding officer may prohibit comments which seem frivolous, repetitive, or harassing. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a person's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, and may request any individual to leave the meeting when that person behaves in a manner that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting. No person may personally, may present, or discuss at any meeting of the board any charges or complaints against individual employees of the county, department heads, professional advisors, or elected officials without first presenting such charges or complaints to the board, to the presiding officer, in writing, signed, verified by the group or person making the charges, or complaint. Remarks by any persons addressing the board which reflect adversely upon the character and motives of any other person or group are out of order. Also, attacks in the form of interferences, insinuations, or innuendos against the character or motives of a person shall be out of order. As a board, we believe strong that we, as elected officials, our department heads, professional advisors, and employees are all servants of the voting public, and that we benefit by a wide range of views and input as we deliberate and consider important issues confronting our county. The guidelines above are designed to enhance orderly and efficient receipt of public comment, while at the same time ensuring a level of civility and decorum appropriate for the properly conducted business meeting of the board. I would like to add something that probably you don't know. We are not required by any law to actually have public comment. We do this as a service to the people that elected us, the people who we serve, to get their input. But we're not required by law to actually have to do that. So, that's the rules. Let's try to avoid, to abide by them. We're here to do county business, not monkey business.
Might I comment, Mr.?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Just as the attorney for the commission, I just want the public to understand, it's always been my understanding that Commissioner's office has always, or the Board of Commissioners have always encouraged and invited public comment. That's not the issue. So, no one's trying to take public comment away. But when we look at the past year, we'd like to have civil discourse, respectful discourse, and show decorum in our meetings, and that's something we're all striving to improve upon. And Commissioner Morozinski is correct. Pursuant to the law and the open door law, the public has the right to observe and record the county doing business. That's a public's absolute right. But with respect to public comment, there is no right to that, but we offer public comment. So, I'm just letting everyone know, in the future, in effort to have better meetings, to do the business of the county, should things get raucous, or personal attacks, or personal motives be commented upon, I will ask that we move on from public comment or to recess. And that's not for me to intervene. I recognize no one's voted for me. I'm not a publicly elected official, but I am the attorney, and the purpose of these meetings is to do county business, and that's what we want to do. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So, with that, we'd like to open public comment.
Just like to appreciate Commissioner Morozinski's reading of that ordinance. While Indiana state statute doesn't require us to have public comment, I still believe that, and I have, as I have stated in the past, that the people have a right to redress of government, and if they're not able to redress their government in the form of public comments, I don't believe that's representative of a constitutional republic. So, while the legislature at this time may not recognize it, I still think it is crucial to our form of government. Thank you.
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. Happy New Year, everyone. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve on some more boards, and I'll just do the best job I can do, and I'll always attend every meeting. Thank you.
Public Comment.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 on Main Street. I'm a Michigan City man. Good morning, distinguished and honorable LaPorte County Commissioners. I just want to add a little bit to what Commissioner Rich Morozinski in the disclaimer that he just wrote a little bit ago. You know, there's people from downstate, you know, like Hamilton County, and Como, Fishers, Noblesville, Weskiel, Zionsville, Columbus, and Indianapolis. You know, they're like in the county, or invested into our county, into our cities. You know, when we have like the zoo for our meetings, and you know, you gotta have to call them, because that leaves a really bad impression on us, and it's somewhat embarrassing. The other thing I want to talk about, I got a little something to complain about, your County Solid Waste Board, you're gonna have the new contract for this Warden Waste Way on the elk cart doing the recycling pickups. They said they're gonna stop their pickups at five o'clock in the morning. That's okay for all the boondock dwellers out in the county, but here in Michigan City, we have an ordinance that we're not supposed to do any of our ground maintenance, or construction work, or make any type of noise disturbance until seven o'clock in the morning. Our ruckus department now start their pickups until seven in the morning. We have an issue with the paving crews from week three, Friday, about five years ago. They don't want to come here and work, because they like to work throughout the whole day, but they're not allowed to start till seven AM either. So, when they come every other Monday in Michigan City, they need to start at seven AM. I guess we'll try it out for a little while. You know, they got their backup sirens on their trucks. They go beep, 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 beep. They make loud runs when they pick up our towers. With that being said, I just want to wish you all to have a nice day, and peace be with you. Go Wolves. Smoking crap and night side detectors save lives, and I'm Len O'Connor.
Thank you. Public Comment is still open. Do we have anyone else for Public Comment?
Yeah, our new recyclers, I heard them outside my house this morning at 6:15 AM. Johnny on the spot. This woman looks familiar.
Welcome. Thank you. It's nice to be on this side of the podium. My name is Sheila Matias, 1400 Lake Shore Drive in Michigan City. I'm here to correct the record. I called Mrs. Graham Rosa this week to let her know that I would be here, and that I wanted to be sure that she understood where, why I'm here, and why I'm here as a citizen. So, when you're a public official, as you all know, you do, the rules are different. People can say things about you, and they can tell fibs, and they can make things up, and you just kind of have to sit back and take it, because that's politics, and that's public life. But when you're a private citizen, the rules change, and you don't have to take lies and your family name being thrown into the mud. So, at your last meeting, there was a long and involved discussion about insurance, and $650,000 is being bandied about. I'm not here to talk about that, because I really don't know all the ins and outs of that. But my name, and of all the people in the world, Sheriff John Boyd's name was linked to my name, and there was an insinuation that we had been on county insurance ten months too long, until October 2023. That is a fabrication. That is a bold-faced lie. And I'm here for two things. I want to talk about Monique Thomas, but in light of Monique Thomas's work, in December, Monique Thomas made a call to me, and I'm sure she did the same to anyone else that was coming off payroll on December 31st, and she let me know that I needed to get insurance or figure out something for January 1st, because I would no longer have county insurance. I thanked her for the call, and on January 3rd, I received a follow-up letter to me. Dear Mrs. Matias, we are going to inform you that the health insurance benefits provided to you by the LaPorte County Government was terminated on December 31st, 2022. If you have any questions, call Human Resources, blah, 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 and it's copied to the Payroll Department. So, I brought copies for everyone. If you'd like them, I will be happy to... So, I know John Boyd isn't here today, but John Boyd and Sheila Matias's name were mentioned as people who had stayed on inappropriately on county insurance. Now, I don't know back-of-the-house things anymore, so I don't know what that looked like, but I promise you, there was no claim from my family on county insurance in 2023.
I personally apologize to you, you know.
But, you know, John Boyd wouldn't even jaywalk if it was against the rules. So, I think John Boyd also is owed an apology, because that's just, it's not okay to bandy private citizens' names around. So, that was my first point of being here today. My second point is, I've watched with horror at some of your meetings, but I'm here to talk about Monique Thomas. This is an individual who has been doing the job of two people since April 2021. In April, that will be two years that one human being is doing the work of two people. Now, when I was a commissioner, you might remember that I thought that department needed to grow. Two and a half people, I thought, was too smart of a department, managing eight hundred and fifty employees, including our seasonals. Now, we have one and a half people doing the job of two and a half people. That is not okay. That is not fair. Monique Thomas, every employer in LaPorte County would be delighted to have someone with her skills. Not only does she have a good education and a bachelor's degree and a master's degree, but she also is highly experienced. I've worked in business in and out for almost thirty-five years. I would hire Monique Thomas in a second if I had a position for her. She is skilled. She has integrity. She's trusted by the employees. Our directors come to her and say, "How do I solve this problem?" And Monique always makes the time to take care of things. Is she perfect? No. But who could be perfect when they're doing two people's jobs? So, I encourage you as a commission to reexamine how it happened in the late 90s or early 2000s, where the executive authority of the commission was changed, and it became a many-people decision between the County Council and the County Commission. You are the executive branch. This is an executive decision, because that person answers only to you. So, I encourage you to have your lawyer within your department to reexamine how that happened and how it can be changed back, so that the commission retains the executive authority that is rightly yours. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Public Comment. Do we have anyone else for Public Comment? Do we have anyone from Zoom?
Good.
Okay, so we're closing Public Comment. Department Head Comments. Do we have any department head reports or comments?
This guy looks like trouble.
Usually, there's a lot of department heads running up here. Randy Novak from the County Council. I just want to, I handed out a resolution that the County Council's gonna bring up on our meeting on May 8th, opposing the reduction in staffing at the Coast Guard Station in Michigan City, and they're gonna, I don't know if anybody's heard, but they're planning on making that part-time Coast Guard Station this summer, just staffing it mainly on weekends and things, and being that they have more responses from that Coast Guard Station than regarding drownings than most, any other place on the Great Lakes. So, having been, retired from the Michigan City Fire Department, I'm sure everybody realizes that drownings don't look at charts to see when people are on duty and when it's convenient for everybody else, and they happen at all times, and it's very important that we do our best to try and retain that. So, I would appreciate it if commissioners look at that, maybe have your attorney redraft it, and then at your next meeting, support it.
Thank you for doing that. You're right. As long as I can remember, every year, every year, people drowned in Lake Michigan, anywhere between Michigan City and twenty miles each side of it.
It's a very bad, being on the south end of the lake there, it's a bad, with undertows and everything else, so.
The lake is very, very tricky.
Definitely, yes. And I also want to commend you on a good meeting.
Thank you. I will ask that our attorney look this over, and we'll put it on our agenda for our next meeting. Does that sound okay with you?
Yes.
Madam President? Thank you.
So, we'll just give you direction. You can, you have it, and then...
Madam President, this is just a resolution for the council that they intend to pass, from the looks of it.
And then, can we get it rewritten for ourselves?
Sure, if you'd like.
Brought to our next Commissioner's meeting?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Pachek, I've been in contact with State Senator Braun's office, as well as some of our representatives, Representative Yacom. The Coast Guard is moving to part-time almost a dozen different Coast Guard stations around the Great Lakes, simply because staffing issues, they don't want to. But the issue is, they simply don't have the manpower. There just aren't enough people, bodies in the United States Coast Guard right now to fill all those spots. As you're constructing that, if there's some way you could delineate the higher calling for our station, as opposed perhaps to some of the others, as Commissioner Morozinski mentioned, we have a significant amount of drownings, I believe, per, for our location here as compared to some of the other ones. So, maybe having something in there to reiterate the importance specifically of that station, if they're going to obviously be de-staffing, if you will, you know, at least a dozen different stations around the Great Lakes, be good to give an indication of why ours should be at the very bottom of that list as a choice to de-staff. And again, it's not the Coast Guard wants to de-staff these, it's that they simply do not have the bodies or the manpower to fill all these positions there, so short-staffed. Thank you.
Correct. I just want to add, Mr. Haney, that I would also ask that there's some other Senator Braun to be added to this list here, too, as well as our state reps to be added to that.
be added to that, and here's the other thing, the closest response time to St. Joe or, or I think it's Milwaukee, it's a two-hour response time, if there's somebody's drowning, I don't have to tell you, in two hours, you're, you're just doing a body recovery, is all you're doing is helping look in for, so it's very important, thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Department Head Comments, do we have any other department heads?
Good morning, Tim Stables, LaPorte County Auditor. I just want to point out that my payroll department has no authorization or ability to remove people from the health insurance, so the fact, um, and our office is not making any accusations of any wrongdoing by two former high-profile public officials, but the fact of the matter is, high-profile public officials were left on the insurance through October, and we have a letter that Commissioner, former Commissioner Matias just turned over to us, that says that they've been removed as of December 31st, 2022, they were not removed, just as a matter of factual basis, they were not removed, we have no authority to remove them, so we may have been carbon copied that they were removed, but they weren't removed, and it was someone else's job, not the payroll department, because they're not authorized, the Human Resources Department was created 15 or 20 years ago by the county of LaPorte to put people on health insurance and take people off.
Do you not understand that she came up here as a private citizen and she asked to have her name kept out of our meetings, do you understand that you yourself?
I'm not talking about.
Who threw out those two elected officials, and I apologize personally to her because she is a private citizen.
That is not what this subject is about, I'm sorry that that got brought into it, but the notion that certain high-profile elected officials were not even removed is indicative of an issue, thank you.
Do we have anyone else from Department Heads? Any other department heads? Do we have anyone on Zoom? So we're closing Department Head Comments, Request, we have a request for, to consider road closures during the annual tour of LaPorte, which will be held August 24th, 2024, and this is sponsored by LaPorte YMCA.
Motion to approve, they do this every year?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass. Um, Old Business, we have no old business, no new business, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.